Good evening. I'd like to call this May 12, 2025 Slovenia Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Coke, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hoffman.
Here.
Ms. Conklin.
Here.
Ms. Lavelette.
Here.
Mr. Feller.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a presentation first?
Yes. Good evening, every-- okay, we're good, sorry. Good evening, everyone. Yes, we do have a presentation this evening. I would like Ms. Andrea Johnson to come up to the podium. Andrea is the Director of Secondary Education and will present some information regarding the process that will work to standardize the implementation of the instructional materials and curriculum that we have as directed by Ohio Revised Code. So Andrea, I know that you've been working with our educators at the high school, specifically the ELA department, since around October of the school year. So I'm going to turn over the microphone to you. I may chime in a little bit.
Okay.
So don't be prepared.
I'll be ready for it.
Don't be afraid. I may chime in, but thank you for presenting this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. For those of you in the audience who may not know me, my name is Andrea Johnson. I serve Slovenia's schools as the Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. I work with all staff in grades six through 12 in each of our junior high and high school buildings to provide curriculum support. And as Dr. Motley just stated, my purpose tonight is to speak to you about the process our secondary teachers have followed to update our list of instructional resources in our core ELA classes. While the draft resource you have in front of you to review today is specific to our Northview and Southview courses, I want to note that our junior high school staff are participating in a similar process, but on a different timeline. This evening, I'd like to address three main topics. Number one, an overview of the process we have followed to update our lists of reading materials in ELA and the timeline we have followed during the 2024-25 school year, beginning in September, actually, of this year. And number two, relevant legislation and policies that have affected our work. And number three, what steps we will need to follow moving forward. As I just stated, this conversation began, actually, in September and has been influenced by several factors. First, as a district, we have spent the last couple of years updating our curriculum maps and our pacing guides. This exercise is in alignment with our strategic plan and should be completed regularly as these documents are living documents. That process, mapping and alignment, includes classroom teachers from all buildings in all grade levels, department chairs, and administration at the secondary level, specifically with me. All departments meet to participate in conversations about pacing and curriculum. Meetings will include different teacher groups, such as grade-level teams, department teams, and building-specific or cross-district teams. Support is differentiated based on what needs are communicated with administration by department chairs. While we have a variety of professional learning activities happening on PD days, this school year, for example, we devoted two professional development days to high school department meetings specifically, both district-wide teams and building-specific teams. Teams may also be able to meet individually on days when the school day is adjusted. For example, time on OST testing days can be devoted to department meeting time, if available. We also held a release day in April, specific to our high school English staff. These options are available depending on the needs of our staff, and I depend very heavily on department chairs to communicate these needs with me and our building administrators so we can plan accordingly. Second, from time to time, we have questions or concerns arise about materials our teachers have chosen for instruction. While sometimes these questions are challenging in nature and based on queries from parents or community members, we are cognizant of the procedures we have in place as a district to help guide these conversations, especially if there is a concern brought forward about a teacher's instructional choices. When there are concerns, we are able to point to Board Policy 9130, which outlines the process all stakeholders should follow to voice a concern. Concerns about curriculum filter my way, and having established processes which are communicated out ensures everyone has the most accurate and timely information about educational options for students. Lastly, as conversations among teaching staff have taken place, and speaking as a former English teacher here, it's always essential to know what texts are being taught elsewhere in the district or in other classrooms. This prevents duplication and also allows us to build on topics and ideas previously introduced. This flow of communication is essential and one of the largest reasons why this work of our staff is vital. It is why we have devoted so much time this year for conversation. This directly affects families, and we are acutely aware of this. Allowing for time to collaborate during the workday creates specific space where these collaborative conversations can happen. Conversations among teachers from other school districts are also extremely valuable and help inform conversations when our staff meet. I will say, as a curriculum administrator, I'm able to work with instructional leaders from surrounding districts, the districts I've noted in particular. We meet regularly to better equip me to have conversations with our teachers. The flow of information among and across districts, I will say, is invaluable. We are also able to share tips and tools that help support our students here in Slovenia. As we move through the school year and teachers continue to review their book selections, the district became aware of the fact that we had not officially approved our selected district curriculum and reading lists in English Language Arts, specifically our book lists. It is Ohio Revised Code 3313.21 specifically that outlines the role of this Board of Education in determining and selecting textbooks and reading lists, instructional materials, and academic curriculum, and we are bound to that. We also noted that we have in our board policy, policy that outlines our responsibility to approve our curriculum, our instructional materials. The district noticed at this time that we were in the process of updating and solidifying these book lists anyway, which could allow the board to approve them. Also during the school year, legislation was introduced at the state level, House Bill VIII or the Parents' Bill of Rights, and subsequently passed last month. That influences how we communicate with parents what we're teaching. This bill has been the topic of conversation at every principal meeting since January. It has also been the topic of conversation in regional curriculum meetings, as well as an ongoing topic of conversation among teacher teams. While we await additional guidance from our legal team and the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, we do know certain things. For example, we know that the law aims to increase parental involvement in education, including reiterating parents' rights to review materials, a factor which is also included in our board policy 2210, which was adopted in 2014. These three pieces of policy, ORC 3313.21, board policy, and House Bill VIII, all directly speak to the work we have already been doing, updating our book lists and increasing communication amongst stakeholders. They also add a legal angle to the work our staff has been doing and have informed our team conversations as we've moved through the school year. While some legislation, House Bill VIII, for instance, is new this year, the existence of a book list is not. It predates me, but this year, as a staff, we have devoted time to updating this document. We have leaned on our colleagues, both within the district and outside the district, and use resources such as common sense media to help inform our choices. We also have tools that have been shared regionally to help guide teachers' internal monologue when making decisions about what texts to include on these lists. We look forward to further guidance from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce and also our own legal team as we move forward. What we do know is that we, as a district, are responsible for updating the lists you have before you and preparing them for your approval. We also know that we are responsible for communicating with our parents and families what curriculum choices we have made so that they may review our materials. As a district, it is always my priority to make sure that our practice is consistent and reliable. It is also our responsibility to ensure we're effectively communicating with all stakeholders. The draft list in front of you is one communication tool. While this evening we are focusing on a draft book list for our high schools, it is important to remember that this work is being mirrored at the junior high level, though on a different timeline. While teachers continue to review and update their literary choices, we also recognize that there are other factors at play that affect the timeline in our junior high schools. One example is the ongoing conversation about how we're using our reading courses to support students developing literacy skills. It should be noted that the district has adopted Wit and Wisdom as our core ELA curriculum in grades K5 pursuant to state requirements. This K5 adoption makes it unnecessary for our elementary colleagues to duplicate this specific work. Personally, I depend heavily on the feedback from our ELA department chairs in our junior high schools as we continue to move forward, and I will continue to rely on their expertise. I want to thank these individuals, both junior high and high school department chairs, for helping the district to support our teachers with this work. I rely heavily on these teachers and other administrators to keep the dialogue going as we move forward together. I commend all of our teachers in a variety of departments who have added their voices to the process of auditing our reading materials and determining what selections they have included on these draft lists. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to our work this school year.
Thank you, Andrea. I appreciate your presentation. More specifically, when we are looking at the selection of textbooks as it relates to not only Ohio Revised Code, but also in our current board policies, we do have an opportunity in Board Policy 9130 when it regards to matters regarding instructional materials to have a committee of sorts to complete this work, in which the board would then take the work of the committee to move that list forward or those instructional materials forward. It feels like the process that we've been working through this past six, seven months since an early or part of the school year has been work that's been in collaboration in a committee format, but probably not as formalized as we could have naturally said it is an arm of the board, because the board at this point in time doesn't have a resolution in place for the committee to do the work. But I think we should be clear, there is some rumors or murmurings going around that the board wants to select books. The books that are on a draft copy of this reading list, if you will, are all books that have been selected by our educators. It's our educators. And I know there is some concern in regards to some feedback I've received, specifically in regards to what if there's a book on there that a parent doesn't want, or doesn't like, or doesn't want their child to read? We already have a policy in place for that, and that's actually a couple of policies. One, 2240, which speaks to controversial issues, and also, if a parent has a concern, one parent cannot remove a list or book from our reading list. By board policy, as it states right now, which is in Board Policy 9130, complaints and processes for matters regarding instructional materials, a parent cannot come in and say, "I want a book removed." There's a whole process that we need to go through, and that would have to go before several steps. But those policies have been in place, I believe, since 2014 and perhaps even before 2014. But I commend your work with the teachers. I know the ELA teachers have been working very hard. I know the list is quite comprehensive. I know that we have provided our board members with a copy of that comprehensive list, understanding it's in draft form. There's a lot of work there. There's a lot of novels that are listed. I know there has been a concern too, as a question, well, are novels the same as the textbook, are reading lists the same? It is implied by the law that they are one and the same, even though they may not be bound. Moby Dick may not be bound to The Odyssey, but they are required materials that we actually expect our children to read in order to earn a grade. Either we purchase them through student fees, or we purchase them for our students, or we require that parents buy the books in order that the students have them, in order to have them in class to learn from them. I appreciate you talking about the process at the junior high as well. I know because we've restructured our reading courses at the junior high coming into the fall, again, believe it or not, another ODE unfunded mandate. For those who have been in the elementary field for some time, we've had RIMPs in place, which is a reading improvement monitoring plan for those students who are performing below reading level. In grades, really starts in kindergarten, you can be placed on a RIMP. That has now moved up to sixth grade. Hence, we had to restructure our reading classes in order for them to receive high-intensity or high dosage intervention in order to close the gap for those students who are no longer reading on grade level, and we have to literally document what interventions are being in place for those students who are reading below grade level. So because of that, that's one of the variables, because of the mandate, that we need to restructure reading at the junior high. And it's going to take some time in order for our staff to have some time to understand what that will look like, along with professional development, also tying on to Wit and Wisdom that we already have at the elementary level, just a lot of steps that we still need to undergo. So I understand the adjusted timeline for the junior high ELA teachers, but it is something that we eventually will have in place as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for your attention and your presentation.
Does anybody have any questions?
I guess I have one. In the fall, when this came up, I think it first came to my attention, particularly with respect to Policy 2210 and the board's approval of educational materials. One of the things that I was concerned about was the process for when a parent objects to a book, which we know will happen. For whatever reason, a parent may object to a book. And I think you and I talked a little bit, Andrea, about if there was going to be a plan in place for those type of situations. And I felt like it varied from school to school, and I'm just curious, is that something that's going to be streamlined, or is that addressed in this process?
So I will say, Dr. Motley alluded to this. We already, we have policy in place that guides that practice, and that is a conversation that we have started having more frequently across buildings so that we are following a consistent process. And part of that is an education piece, making sure that everyone is aware of what that channel and that flow of information should look like. And it might flow a little bit differently based on our level of awareness coming into it, but we are having those conversations as well.
I guess my main concern with that process was just that when, I feel like if we give parents enough advance notice that teachers can then make arrangements, I just want to make sure that if a child can't read a book because their parents won't let them, I don't want them to then not get instruction somewhere else.
Sure.
And so that was just one of the, and you and I talked about that with principals as well, and I felt like that was being done. I just, that was the concern that I had coming out of that, so I just wanted to follow up on that.
And you are right, Ms. Conklin. That is Policy 2240. I think it's controversial issues, perhaps, and that if a, and it's always been on the books. My fifth district, there's always been an avenue for where, if a parent has a concern about content of a book, that they are to be provided with a alternate assignment. I think what we want to make sure is that the alternate assignment is comparable.
Yes.
And the teacher and the student have an opportunity to still engage on that content, opposed to having a different lesson structure that may be removing that child from a classroom for an extended period of time versus, and having no direct instruction by that teacher. So I think this process that we're going through highlighted some areas where we can enhance and improve our practices at both high schools. Sometimes it is a challenge to have two high schools in one district because we sometimes can fall to be inconsistent if we don't, on every occasion, now and then, just take stock audit of our practices to make sure we are being consistent, and our parents, that both high schools are having the opportunity, that our students at both high schools, that our educators at both high schools are having fair opportunities. So it was through the process that we realized we could straighten up and streamline and really make sure not only to protect our teachers so that they have a list that they can then stand behind and say, "Listen, the board knows I'm using this book, and we're comfortable with that," albeit from a committee or a board resolution or board approval. But in addition, that if a parent, for a reason, religious reasons or otherwise, says, "I don't want my child reading this book," how can we respectfully give them another option to still learn the state standards, because that's what we're here to teach, the state standards, but do so in a way that's respecting that parent's beliefs or religious position that they may have, but also our job is to teach the content standards with an alternative material?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. This is the first opportunity for public participation for items which are on the agenda. I want to call you up. If you could just come up, say your name and your address, and then you may address us for three minutes. First up is Kirsten Long.
My address is 3809 Plume Road in Northwood. Do you need my zip code, or is that, that's sufficient?
It's sufficient. You're good. You're fine.
All right. Good evening. My name is Kirsten Long, and I currently teach third grade at Central Trail. I'm incredibly proud to be part of a community that values the education and development of our students. I'm here tonight to express my concern about the policy requiring book lists to be submitted for approval. While we are being told that this does not currently apply to elementary classrooms, it feels like the first step toward a much more restrictive environment, one that we've already seen play out in other districts and states where teachers have been required to catalog and submit their entire classroom libraries for review. In some cases, educators have had to cover or remove books entirely while waiting for district approval. This is not the kind of atmosphere in which meaningful learning thrives. What troubles me most is that the trend that may follow these lists toward banning or restricting books with diverse characters, families, and experiences, books that reflect the world our students live in. These are often the stories that mean the most to students, who rarely see themselves in literature. Removing them sends a message that their identities or backgrounds are not welcome in our schools. Our district slogan is excellence through opportunity. Shouldn't everyone have equal opportunities in what they read and are exposed to in our buildings? As an educator, I've had the privilege of participating in research studies and focus groups based on the impact of diverse books on reading achievement. The results are clear. When students see themselves in the stories they read, and when they're invited into other people's stories, their engagement, comprehension, and confidence grow. Diverse books are not political. They are powerful tools for connection, growth, and learning. I understand the desire for transparency, but we must be careful not to confuse oversight with overreach. Slovenia's students should feel safe in our classrooms to read widely and ask honest questions. Ohio's House Bill VIII does not require the district to publish curricular lists or for them to be approved by the Board of Education. It requires that we have a plan in place. Couldn't that plan be to trust our educators to do what is best for our students? I urge the board to trust teachers to do what we are trained and committed to do, serve the needs of all students. Our choices are grounded in research, guided by standards, and shaped by a deep understanding of what our students need, not just to pass a test, but to grow into educated, compassionate, and thoughtful individuals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. May I comment? Yeah. Do you want to make a comment?
I'd rather comment.
Okay. And while we don't normally comment, we're going to. It's your educators. Dr. Motley?
Kirsten, thank you for your words. I want to say, for the last two years, you've invited me to your classroom to read to your students, and it is one of the highlights of my year. You always have a great room filled with literature. And just to be clear, our ORC and our, those are board policy, refer to classroom libraries. Our board policy that's been in place, that is not revised, but has been in place since 2014, is instructional materials, of which are required to be used by students. So when we adopted Wit and Wisdom, when we adopted that, those books that are within that for your small groups have already been approved by the board because the board approved the adoption. So this looks a little different for K8, I'm sorry, for K5 than it does for grades six through 12. But I do know, because of the book that you have me read for the last two years, where I think it's talking about favorite words, and it's onomatopoeic, that one? Onomatopoeic, yeah, that one. Anyway, but I do know that the characters that you have had, not only, when I read to your students, but my colleagues who have come to your class to read, they're always diverse, and I share so many of your same sentiments about making sure that we have books that represent the students we serve. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Thank you. And I don't normally comment, but I'm going to say, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I kind of feel like I can on this, we do trust educators.
Absolutely.
We absolutely do. And this isn't about banning books. I have struggled with this. Dr. Motley and I have had a lot of conversations about this list, that it's not about banning books, because personally, I feel like now I need to read all these books. When we do get complaints from parents, personally, I've read the books. I buy the book, I read it so that I can, that I can speak to it. It is the law, so we are trying to comply with the law and not ban books. I would never agree with banning books or removing diverse books. I agree with you. Kids need to see that. Students need to see themselves reflected in books, and I am 100% for that. Again, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but, you know, we do trust you. This isn't about that.
And to co-sign on that, just to be clear, as Ms. Johnson said, the book lists that we have were generated by teachers, not by board members looking at a list saying, "Put this book on the list, take this book off the list." Every book that's on this draft copy came from our educators, who are the experts of their classroom, just to make sure that's reiterated. So thank you, Ms. Hoffman. I appreciate that.
If I could just comment too, I agree with everything that Julia said, and I would add too, that I feel like, in some ways, this book list, I hope, protects educators in that it pushes information out to parents and gives them the opportunity to read that, and so that there's no blind side. Information's always better. The more information, better. Yes, I did tell you about this book. Yes, I did put this book out there. I'm an avid reader, and I like Julie. If somebody complains about a book, if I haven't read it, I look at it. I was so excited to see some of the books on that list and wish I was in grade school again, or junior high, to be able to read all day long. But, so I just, I don't want you to think this is about book banning, because it's the farthest thing from my mind, but I feel like information for parents is always good, and the more information we put out, the more we protect ourselves, and the more we sort of beat that there's no transparency complaint. And that's kind of where I was coming from.
Yeah, I agree. And for the record, I think there's a book on this list that I actually bought years ago when I read it and took to Northview and Southview and gave it to English teachers and said, "This is a fantastic book." And they said, "You're going to back me up if we read it?" And I said, "100%," because it was a fantastic book, so.
Still is a great book.
It is a great book, yes.
And a good movie.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Dan Greenberg?
Dan, before you begin for public record--
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Before you even get started, congratulations on your appointment as the new OEA Vice President. That is just fabulous for you.
Thank you.
It's been a journey, and I don't mean to jump in front of your public comment, but I think that is such an important accomplishment. I needed to get that out first, so congrats.
Thank you very much, Dr. Motley. I appreciate it. And for record, Dan Greenberg, 4654 Vicksburg Drive. I just, I don't have as eloquent a statement as Kirsten did. I just wanted to share some thoughts about things and just to give from a teacher perspective and to share some concerns that have been brought to me about the process. And I at first wanted to say thank you for your statements following Kirsten's remarks about your commitment to providing that rich environment, literary environment for students. I really appreciate that. I think that things have evolved through the course of this year, and it's left teachers feeling very concerned and not sure of what's happening right now. You know, when we talk about that September meeting, it was, it makes perfect sense to me that you all know what we're teaching in our classrooms and that you do back us. Julie, your point about the, I may have been one of those teachers that you're going to back me if I--
You were.
--if I teach this book, and I do teach the book, but I wouldn't teach it if I didn't know the board was backing me, because I just don't want to be out there on a limb. So I totally believe that that is a good thing, and I've talked with teachers as well about that, that I think it's a good thing to have that line of communication between board members, administrators, and teachers on things. I think where things have gotten a little bit far afield, and by the way, it might be that I don't have all the information. I say that upfront. It seems that we're looking at doing a once-a-year approval process, and I think what you're, you might be hearing and what I have heard from some teachers, is the concern about, we try to be flexible and adapt to our students' reading levels and our students' needs and our student interests. And so the concern, one of the critical concerns has been from a space of like letting you know what we're teaching, and someone just pointed out to me, considering this a living document that is constantly evolving versus a once-a-year approval, what it has kind of changed things. I mean, there is this list that you have that was generated by teachers, and it was based on what are we teaching now? based on what are we teaching now? But there's been a lot of concern amongst teachers, not about censorship from my colleagues at the high school level, it's been more about what happens if we want to be adapting our curriculum to the needs of our current students, and the idea that maybe we are not able to because there is a once-a-year process with the book specifically listed, and we can't make any changes until the next year. So I don't know if that is the intent of the policy. It wasn't something Ms. Johnson talked about, but I think that that's been a critical, a critical concern that has been voiced to me. It's evolved into teachers, when we last met, potentially putting out a thousand book title list for you to approve from a space of, "We don't know for sure." And this is instead of just giving you, "Here's what we are teaching and what we have taught in the last few years, here's what we could be teaching," so that we've managed to give ourselves a lot of places to put our chips. And that's, I think, been the big, one of the big concerns about a once-a-year book approval specific list.
Okay, I'm going to stop you for a second. So if there was a book mid-year, a teacher, it won't be Dan because he won't be here, he'll be at Columbus, said, "Hey, I really want to teach this," they could get it on the agenda and get it approved?
Absolutely. So here's an example, and I wrote that down. I know that we did start out as we were working through, because I would like to suggest that we, now that we find ourselves here under the conditions, that we really need to fine-tune a textbook committee. We have not had, from my, at least in my tenure, and I believe early on, a textbook committee of potentially board members, parents, and educators, and administrators that have, I've witnessed and participated in other districts, that go, or go through the process of vetting books or talking about books to be added or deleted. And Dan, what I hear you saying is if an educator goes out and finds a brand-new book in October, and they're like, "I want to use this to teach the standards in February," what opportunity do they have to bring it forward? Well, in that regard, I appreciate the feedback, because I think the thought process was, "Once a year, we'll make it easier for teachers to manage," but it's not closing the door if you want to add a book. Books are published every day, new titles every day. The New York Times lists every day. So if a teacher finds a book that they want to read that they feel will meet the needs of their students and will cover the content standards, then by all means, through that process, thank you for that nugget, let's work through the committee to say, "When can that happen? How can that happen? Let's put some meat on the bones with that," because that's collaboration. Truly, once a year was looking at efficiency, but I also don't want to have a teacher say, "Gosh, you mean I found this book in October, and I have to wait till next October?" We don't want to do that.
Thank you for that clarification and explanation. I think I really, I really appreciate that, and I know that that has been at the focal point of things again. And I think that, you know, from my space within SEA, with Integrity, working with our curriculum department and all our administration, I have totally been in support from the get-go of, "We want to make sure that the board and all parties are aware, we understand that importance, and if we're able to do things in that, in that manner where there is some flexibility and ability to add things on as the year goes on," I think that does take away a lot of the concern. I can speak, as an individual, I can't speak for all teachers, but I know that that does help do that. And I just wanted to add something as well, just for your, just knowledge as it's been on the ground. I know that we're in a different academic climate than when I started at the high school over 20 years ago, but I remember that first year at the high school and the conversation where a parent did not want their child reading The Crucible. They said, "The Crucible promotes witchcraft." And while I don't agree with that, it was something that was honored, that parent request, and we had another assignment, I believe it was, in that case, a comparable novel, which was The Scarlet Letter, and the parent was okay with that. And so I think that there, you know, in some of this, we talk about like what have we, there are a lot of things that have already been going on that mirror some of the process already, the things that we've been doing in terms of when parents come to us. I had a parent come about that book last year, and the parent came in pretty fired up about it and with things paginated, and I said, "It's okay, we can, why don't you and I work together, and we'll find another book that you find suitable for your child?" And it was, it was not like this, it was like this. And I think that we still have that space to do though, and I do that, and I appreciate your consideration and your thoughtfulness about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just chime in, I think in terms of mid-year approvals, we could, assuming we had legal blessing, we could, blessing from legal counsel, we could just delegate that to the superintendent to sort of provisionally approve things during the course of the school year, like we do with bus stops or other interim changes. I mean, that's just my personal thought. I don't think that we need to approve books that arise during the course of the school year, assuming our legal counsel agrees with that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. With that, we're with you, Mr. Coe.
I just have one approval for the month, 4.1 bid acceptance resolution. We did receive our paving and sealing bids last Wednesday. We had our bid opening. The bids came in. We're going to accept each package individually, so the lowest bid on each package, we're going to reseal Northview and Southview this summer and restripe, and then Hillview and Highland are going to get the top layer a couple inches milled off and repaved. So those four bid packages did come in about $79,000 less than we estimated, so that is good. Competition is good. So we have one resolution to approve all of those bid packages.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you. Adam?
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. With that, we're with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, ma'am. I am recommending item 5.1, which is overnight field trips. We have a couple on the agenda this evening. One for our Northview High School dance team to actually go to Oakland University and Rochester from July 24th through July 27th this summer. And also, we have 20 students from the Northview High School Boys and Girls Cross Country players to go to Traverse City. I think this might be an annual trip for our cross-country runners. So two trips to approve this evening.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
I have heard Ms. LaVallette talk about this camp, Traverse City and the camp, and the conditions of the cabin, so that's why I remembered it was annual. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.2. This is a I.A. boundless service agreement for a student with special needs.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Adam?
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.4, which is a resolution for the special education model policies and procedures updated April of 2025, and this is due to some changes that were made at the state level. The state has gone, I know, Tim, you're looking at me like, "Yeah." It's one of those where the state made a change, then made another change, then made another change, and now I think they finally have reconciled the documents, and they now align with federal law. Is that correct, Tim?
That is correct, yes. Actually, we approved a resolution on March 10, and then they made four additional changes in April, so now we're approving it in May. That has to be resolved by the end of this month, so that is the clarification and justification for that.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
And finally, I have item 5.5, which is a MOU with our Sylvania Educators Association regarding counselors, and 504 responsibilities.
I'll move for approval. I'll second. Any comments or questions? Adam?
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, we're with you, Josh.
I will recommend items 6.1 and 6.2 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1, our licensed new teachers, and 6.2 is licensed extra duty.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 6.1 and 6.2.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Adam?
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?